I'll go ahead and call the call meeting for the 6th of June 2017 to order. As you all may remember, last week during at the end of the public hearing for the budget workshop, Councilman Wingard had requested that we have a called meeting to have some further discussion about the budget, and so we set tonight for the date, and so we'll go ahead and have that. There's only two items on the agenda, the budget meeting scheduled discussion, the fire department discussion, and so since you're the one that wanted to call a meeting, I'll go ahead and let you start, Mr. Wingard.
Okay, first, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank Mayor Hartley, Mr. Mumpower. I called this meeting because of a lack of meetings. We should have regrouped after the fire presentation, and we did not. This council has done a tremendous amount of work and spent much time on this budget, but this job is not finished. I called out for everyone in this city to present us with options. They have helped us move this city forward. This council has done a very good job looking at all the departments and making the necessary changes as needed, until now. I have one more option that I want to bring to the table. After the public meeting, the people has input, this council needs to get back together. You never know what new information or suggestions are going to come up. To me, it looks bad not to have a meeting after public input. If this or any other council had its mind made up, then why have a public meeting? We should respect the people and their comments and talk about what they have to say. So we missed two opportunities for meetings. That's the first item on the agenda here tonight. We failed to do our job. We should have regrouped after the fire proposal to look and see if there was any more options, and we should have had a meeting after the public spoke to see if any new information come to light. Going forward, we need to do that. It's the right thing.
Do you have anything else on that? Because I want to make a comment to that.
Okay.
I mean, are you done with item number one?
Yeah, I'm done with that.
I mean, you know, I'm not, we have met a lot over the past 40 days or so probably, you know, and the thing is, we sat down at the council meeting, in the first council meeting in April, and went over the schedule for the budget, and we laid that out, and of course, we had added additional meetings to that, but at the time, it was laid out that the public hearing would have been the week before on the 23rd, and we would have tonight have the first reading of the budget ordinance. But nowhere in that did anybody say, and we sat here for almost 50 minutes going over that schedule, nowhere did anybody at that time say, "We need to have another public meeting between the public hearing and the first reading." So there was ample opportunity at that point, there was ample opportunity, I forget the exact date, but there was a date there in May where we added additional meetings to the schedule and revised it and moved the public hearing back to the 30th. Again, nobody, none of the five of us said that. I understand your point, but we have the opportunity to have a public discussion before we vote on the budget ordinance next week. Again, that's why, you know, I think in a lot of people's minds, we still have, it's not that anybody's minds made up, it actually gives us a little more time to think about things and to talk to others, but as far as another meeting, again, I would just say there was ample opportunity, if anyone wanted to add that to the schedule, to do so when we first set the schedule and when we revised it. So your point's well taken about getting back together, but nobody raises that point, and we had plenty of time early on in the process to do that.
I understand that. I mean, this is my first time with the budget, or I'm new to all of this, but hindsight, going forward in the future, we need to plan. If council is leaning one way, and then a presentation is made and all the minds are changed, we need to regroup going forward. And then, in my opinion, after public comment, because we asked them to come and listen and do not let them have any input until that appointed time, and then we do not want to regroup and talk about what they had to say, that is wrong. So going forward in the future, this council and everyone after us needs to have those two more additional meetings.
Well, I would even add, up until, I think the last year when, I think when Vice Mayor Hubbard was mayor, he started it, but up until then, they would have the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance on the same night. So at least, you know, we have built some time into the schedule to, that the public can come and they can comment, and then we can think about it before we vote. You know, as you point out, going forward next year, that's something we can discuss when we have the budgets set the schedule, but, you know, again, to me, at no point, and there was ample opportunity for anyone to say, you know, "We need to look at this and, you know, we're having the public," because it was all built around, you know, having to get a budget ordinance that could be advertised, have time to advertise it before the public hearing, have time after the public hearing, before the first reading, and have time for the second reading, but at no point did anyone say that we needed to get back together. And again, we still have the opportunity next week to have discussion before we actually have the vote on the first reading, so there's still more opportunity for discussion as well.
And I'll just add to it. I do agree with Kevin. I mean, you know, we're in a situation where it's better to meet more often than less often. Hindsight's 20/20, but, you know, I did feel like going through this process that, you know, we were kind of under the gun to pick nights and pick dates and meet here and meet there, and, you know, the lesson learned should be that we got to, we got to lay out a better schedule next time. I think we got to maybe lay out a full six or eight week schedule, you know, with the days in there that we have to meet, and then some provisional dates, right, that we agree to as we go along, whether we need them or not, so, you know, it was kind of like, I felt like we were kind of coming up with the dates as we went, and we shouldn't do that, you know, we should have had that all laid out, so that's something we can improve next time. But, you know, I think his point's valid, you know, we had some good comments from the public the other night, and it deserves discussion, and whether we go through those tonight, we can, or whether we address some of them the next meeting, we need to address them. I'm with you, 100%, we got to do that. And as new information comes up, you know, any councilman that feels like we need to get back together, we need to, because I think we've all got our, we've all got our view on things, so we need to make sure everybody understands our view and where we're coming from, and make sure we're all looking at the information the same way, we're not looking at it wrong. So I got no, I mean, I got no real issue with what Kevin's saying at all.
Like you say, I think, you know, to probably start the process earlier, and I know we were a little behind this year as well, because of the hiring of a CFO and some other things that got us a little behind, but I think, you know, that is a good lesson to be learned is to always start early with the budget, because it is a long process, and we spent probably more time this year than I know any other council that I've been on or can remember has, so.
Well, you know, if you keep up, if you keep up with the revenue projections as the year goes on, if you keep up with how the costs are trailing or trending in actuals as the year goes on, the budget process really should be almost a downer. I mean, there's really not much to it, because you already know where you are before you even get there. And so we missed a couple big opportunities to get our arms around things, and, you know, one of the big ones for me was the revenue, and then, you know, we were out of CFO probably for a good portion of three months, so we didn't, we weren't having any kind of finance meetings, and so we were, we were kind of, you know, driving blind for a few months, and that can't happen again, because that kind of exasperated the point when we got in March, and all of a sudden, we learned, you know, where we were on revenues, and then that kind of threw everything in a tailspin, and that's not the way to do it. You know, we should look at it closer as July 1st goes, and we should know exactly where we are by mid-year and exactly where we are by the end of March, and, you know, it's not, it's not much of a discussion of what to do, you know, to approve the budget, but that's not the way it happened this year.
No, every quarter, somebody should be coming before council and briefing council what the finances are, every quarter.
That's right. That's right. We should have the CFO coming here every quarter, giving us an update on where the revenues are falling, where the costs are falling, and whether we're tracking to what we budgeted or whether we're not tracking, and if she sees an area that's a concern, she needs to make it known so we can adjust. I mean, that's the way you should do it. So we got a lot, you know, we got a lot to, we got a lot to do to get better, there's no doubt about that.
Okay, well, that was my comments and input on meetings.
So we move to item number two, fire department discussion.
We've had a lot of discussion on this budget, and we need this city and every department inside working together if we plan to weather the storm that's brewing on this debt. In the year 2020, this storm is going to hit, and we can't stop it. Today, we spend $3.1 million on debt services. In the year 2020, that debt service is going to $7.9 million, which is a shortfall of $4.8 million a year. The only way that we can get through this is by cutting our expenses and increasing revenue, not just one, it's going to take both. Tonight, I'm asking the council and the fire department to set in motion a system that makes us strong financially and keeps the fire department intact with all three stations open, with 43 firemen in position. No one loses their job. Let me repeat that, no one loses their job. Volunteering, it works. It is a vital part of this country, and it makes us strong. My proposal is that we fill the openings that we have with volunteers, keep the budget intact as it is. If we don't get no volunteers, then the money is in place to hire the firemen and fill these positions. We're no better off, we're no worse off. But if volunteers apply and this system works, which it will, if we all embrace it, but it's going to take all of us to embrace it, the fire department has to be for it. I would propose that the fire department, over the course of years, if needed, as firemen retire, as they move, or whatever the case may be, that we replace that slot with a volunteer, until we get the 10 volunteers in place that will make this city financially in a better position with that department. I don't want 100% volunteer fire department, nobody in this city does, I don't, but we need a department with both paid and volunteer. The way I understand it, we currently have four positions open in our fire department. If we fill those four positions this year with volunteers, that is an annual savings right out the gate of $240,000, at $60,000 ahead. Volunteering works. I propose that we use it. In closing, I just want to say, never let it be said of this council that it did not do all that it could do to get this city ready and get it in front of this storm that's And it's coming, and we can't stop it. And that is my proposal, that every fireman stay in position, that as these slots come available, that we get volunteers in that position, until we get to a healthy number of 10 volunteers and 33 paid professionals spread out between our three departments. And ladies and gentlemen, and council, this system will work, we just need to implement it, and everybody be on board with it, because if our fire department is not on board with it, then the volunteering won't work. And that is my proposal and my request. Thank you.
Yes, I add a couple comments to what Kevin said. Don't disagree with anything he said. Everybody knows that volunteer departments work. Military is a good example, military uses volunteers, it's called the reserves. The reserves are made up of paid and volunteer, works, it's worked for years. There's a lot of departments, there's a lot of fire departments in the country that tell you volunteerism works, but it's like anything, you got to know how to do it, you got to do it right, you got to, you got to go about it a way that makes sense for your organization. So the fact is, volunteer departments of all types work, and everybody knows that. So we, again, we got to figure out if that makes sense for this fire department, and look at the fire chief's recommendation, how would you do that? Some fire departments have done things like helped college kids, you know, somebody's trying to go through college, they'll, you know, give them some part-time employment and some room and board, you know, as a, as a part-time paid person or volunteer, and let them be a trained fireman. So there are models that work. The fact of the matter is, it's not, it's not just the fire department we got to think about. I mean, we got to look, every department in this city's got to be looked at, right? Fire department is just one. So cities got essential services, you know, public safety, the police, the fire, get the water in the sewer and all the public works. Those are essential, right? You got to do those. But we have to understand, this storm he's talking about, it's real, it's, it's, it's not something that's made up. There's a lot that's built up to this point in time that's got this city to the point where financially, every move is, is important, every move we make is important, and I'm sure people are tired of hearing me, but you need to look at it, I'm telling you, it's real. So if the economy or anything goes south in a way we don't expect, this city could find itself in serious trouble quickly, meaning you can't pay your bills. So we don't want that to happen, that's why you got to get ahead of the storm, you got to be on the front side of that, you got to cut your costs more aggressively, you got to figure out ways to increase your revenues more aggressively, because you don't want to be in a position when 2008 happens again, and the residential downturn hit, and nobody was ready for it, and then all of a sudden, it's like, what do we do now? So the city has extended its financing on the bonds too much, right? We've run up our credit card basically to a level that's not healthy at all. We have invested in things we should never have gotten ourselves into. Unfortunately, this council sits here facing all that, right? So we've got to, we've got to carefully figure out how to get out of this, and hope that the economy doesn't go south on us, that everything plays in our favor, but it's going to take everybody. So I think every department, I think a city manager's going to have to look at every department, and every department head's going to have to study their department and have a plan, a comprehensive plan, that says, if the economy does go south, if the population of Bristol does go down, if the revenues of the city goes down by some percent, we know what we're going to do before it happens. We've already got a, you know, we've already got a plan ready to execute before we get to that point. So whether, whether we say a 5% drop or a 10% drop, we need to pick a number, but we don't need to wait till that happens. So hypothetically, you know, what if we wake up three years from now and Bristol's 13,000 people, not 17,000? What are we going to do then? What if we wake up three years after that and it's 8,000? I mean, those are, those are real numbers that could happen, you know, cities go up and cities go down, just depends on how they, you know, how they react and how they manage themselves. So we've got to be ready for both, you know, both avenues, what if the city goes down, what if the city goes up? So every department head should have a plan to address that. 2020, there's a lot, there's a lot of bills coming due, so those general obligation bonds that got put out there to the tune of $50 million, you know, are basically short-term bonds, so everybody understands what it means to go out and get a short-term loan, right? It all comes due quickly and immediately. So you got two choices, either you got the revenues to pay the short-term obligations, or you go out and you refinance those short-term obligations to a longer-term note, right? So if you're going to refinance to a longer-term note, which is what most cities do, they finance stuff over, you know, a couple decades, not two or three years or four years, but if you're going to refinance, you got to have your house in order, right? If you're going to go out there and say, "I want to refinance this $50 million," and you've not done a good job with the amount of money you've got in the reserve fund, which is your savings account, and you've not done a good job at keeping your costs under control, and you've got your budget out of balance or structurally not where it needs to be, and they see that the city council's not taking the action it needs to move the city in a positive financial direction, then the banks and the financial institutions, the underwriters, are not going to give the city any kind of money at any kind of interest rate that's affordable, right? I mean, you know how that goes, you go to the bank, try to get a loan, and you don't have your finances in order, you're going to have to pay a really high interest rate, which means you could be in a position where you can't afford to refinance. So getting ahead of this curve means we got to be in a good position to refinance, we got to be willing to tighten our belt where we can, hard, and we've got to look at all of the options we have to make sure we don't move in the wrong direction, because we're walking on eggshells, there is no doubt about it, right? I mean, we can't borrow any more money, right? And so, you know, I don't know how to explain that any differently, and you can only cost reduce so much, right? I mean, you can cost reduce, but eventually, it's a revenue problem too. So we saw this year lodging and sales tax, right? It was down pretty significantly, it moved the needle quite a bit. We know a lot of businesses, like the restaurants from exit seven, moved to another location and went out of business, so the revenues have went south, not north. So what if they go south again? What if next year, we wake up and there's another $2 or $3 million down in revenues? So you, you see, we don't know what's in front of us, you know, you can't perfectly predict what's out in front of you, so you got to be ready for, you got to be ready for the worst case, you got to manage for the worst case as best you can, and hope for the best, right? If you hope for the best, and you, or you, you do just the opposite, then you wake up and you're in trouble. So unfortunately, that's where we find ourselves. So my recommendation is this council and the city manager has every department head look really, really close at their departments and put a serious contingency plan together for what we do in the next six months, the next 12 months, if we notice financially things are trending in the wrong direction, and the CFO's going to have to tell us if things are stable and steady or if things are trending the wrong direction, and we need to act before things get dire, we need to act sooner rather than later. So we're, we're a city that's going to have to understand, you might have to act mid-year if something moves in a direction that you don't predict, right? And that's the reality. That's not an emotion, that's not an opinion, that's just the reality of the situation. I know it's like it, but, you know, we're going to have to be ready to deal with it. So I guess I've said enough.
Well, we all know we got to be physically responsible in these departments, but the reason we're here tonight is because of fire and the lack of meetings, so I would like to stay on topic with the fire. I believe that this proposal will work, and I believe this city should try it. There's thousands and thousands of fire departments out there that's a hybrid between paid and volunteers. The gentleman that came from DC and spoke, he mentioned the locality that he serves, there's paid and there's volunteers. It's happening more and more, because cities can't afford the salaries. Rule America can't get all their slots filled with volunteers. Washington County, Tennessee, right now, is running advertisement ads for paid professional daytime firefighters, because their volunteers have to work. It is a combination of both that makes the community strong, and that is what this city needs at this point in time, we need that combination.
I'll just say, I mean, the concept of volunteers, when, when, you know, you talk about all the information, we've heard quite a bit about the fire department and different levels of staffing, and, you know, I think when the presentation that you were talking about, that we didn't get back together and talk about then, the key takeaway I took from that is, you know, if you look at what, and I forget the number, but whatever that standard is, that we're probably understaffed right now, and so to use volunteers to supplement us, to bring us above that, to be where we are, or to help reduce overtime, that would be one thing, although there's, I have a lot of questions about how you do that, because the fire department works 24-hour shifts, so do you get somebody that's going to volunteer for 24 hours, so you'll have someone there the whole shift? I mean, there's a lot of logistics to that that I think need to be worked out, as you point out, there's different models that if you wanted to go down that path, you, you could, but to me, to use volunteer, to freeze positions that we need and use volunteers to backfill that is not, that, I don't agree with that. I think, you know, we need these positions right now, as I say, if anything, we could use volunteers to add to and supplement that, you could probably, if you wanted to try it, I think, you know, you could see how well it would work, and probably, rather than the savings you wouldn't get, what you're talking about from freezing the positions, but you'd probably get some savings from overtime. I mean, if you could have volunteers that would come and serve, you know, and fill in those gaps when people are maybe sick or out on vacation or something like that, you might could get some savings, but to say, "We're going to freeze these positions and fill them with volunteers," to me, is really just a backdoor way of cutting the position.
I'd like to hear what city managers got to say. Have you looked at this topic at all?
I would say that the same rules should apply, and there should be no outbursts from the public. You know, I had asked the fire chief to look at it, I do think that it's something, and I'm going to defer to him here in a second, that I wouldn't, you know, you all talked about freezing police positions, and we froze two, and we're doing an analysis after, I think it was three months, we decided to come back to you all and talk about how much overtime that's cost us. So I had asked the fire chief to look at the difference in if we froze two versus if we froze all four. I absolutely agree that initially, it's going to be easier to use volunteers, if we're able to find volunteers, to offset overtime. Now, I think until you, until we try, I don't know, I mean, I can't tell you what kind of response we're going to have, so if, if they take an effort and do a campaign, and I'm not sure what that looks like, but if we do a realistic effort to try, and we are successful in finding a few, then I think that's something that we could look at further over time. It's not, and I think that's what Councilman Wingard's proposing, if I'm understanding correctly, it's not that... correctly, it's not that we run out and immediately find ten. I mean, it's to see what we find. And with that, I'm going to let the fire chief add anything.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've just, I've got a lot of thoughts in my mind, so forgive me if I go all over the place, but I'll try to stay on point. It was just mentioned that Washington County, Tennessee, is advertising for paid staff to cover for volunteers, you know? I've mentioned in previous meetings that the county has volunteers at Fire Rescue, at Goodson Kinderhook, even at Appalachia. I'm certainly not opposed to trying to get volunteers. That's, you know, something that we'll certainly look at. Last year, when we advertised for paid positions for our $33,000 a year position, I had nine applications that we were able to process and interview, nine, to get paid for this. So I guess I'm a little confused as to where I'm going to find a lot of volunteers. I mean, we'll certainly give it a try, but I think just for discussion's sake, council needs to be aware that there are significant costs involved. They're not free. A class, I talked to the state yesterday, if we put on a firefighter one training program, it's $22,000 to get basic training, and that's just Level 1. All of my paid firefighters in Bristol have firefighter Level 2 and far beyond. So we're talking about somebody who can barely get trained to put out a fire, that's $22,000. The number 10 positions was thrown out to put these guys or girls in a set of gear and uniform, that's $3,000 per person. So that's $30,000 that are going to have to be spent. And then to provide workers' comp insurance and line of duty death coverage, which in Virginia is required, that's $4,000 annually. So we're looking at, right now, $60,000 just to get a program for 10 people up and running. And it would be great to have 10 extra firefighters at no cost or little cost. That's great. But the crew we even mentioned in their presentation or their comments at one of the previous meetings, that the lifesaving crew has 39 paid staff members to do what they do because they can't get volunteers. So I'm just, I guess at a loss on where I'm going to be able to find them. I mean, I'll certainly give it a good try. I'm not against it. I don't want you to get that impression. I just, I'm not sure where I'm going to find them, but we'll certainly beat the bushes and see what we can do. And I would ask this council to provide some direction. To me, are these folks going to be cross-trained as firefighters and EMTs like our current firefighters? Are they going to be singular-trained as just firefighters and not be able to provide medical service? Or, you know, I think those are things that we're going to have to hash out, you know, moving forward.
Okay, well, I'm a little bit confused because when I talked to the lifesaving crew, I can't remember the exact number that they said was paid, but it was in the teens. And I asked them what their overall number was, and they said 45. So they got 39 paid.
Yes, sir. That's what I was told. And they have less than 10 actual active volunteers that run calls.
Okay, that's not the information I got.
That's the information I was given, so.
Well, I think, Chief, what we're looking for is like, you know, we don't want to micromanage necessarily where we go. We're looking for some good proposals. Like, I thought the proposal you had on the emergency services, you know, from the first discussion, that was the right direction. That was a good discussion. It's a pretty complicated thing to do in a short time period, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of trends across the country where there are a lot of fires departments that have gone to emergency services. That's a fact. And I think if you looked at our fire department, and I think if you surveyed the people in the city, they would, they would give this fire department probably an A+ on their response to emergency-type situations. So it's not like you don't have the capability. I think you do. I think you've got to just study it properly, understand exactly what you're getting into from the financial side, you know, the write-off of the debt and all that. So if that's one of the things that you think is the right thing to do for the department, then, you know, look at it in a really detailed manner and come back and say, you know, here's the way we should do this right. You know, here's the way to do this and do it correctly with the right equipment, you know, the right capitalization and the right time period to execute. And then the volunteerism, I think it's the same thing. If you feel like you can do it, and if the fire department thinks they can do it and it helps in some way, you know, come back with a proposal of what's the right thing to do? How would we do it? Would it help us? You know, if you're stretched with people out on vacation or whatever at times and volunteers help, you know, to fill some of the void and you can figure out a way to do it, then come back and say, here's the way we'll do it. So, you know, really looking for you just to come back and give us some solid proposals on, you know, where you want to take the department in the next, you know, 24 to 36 months, and what your department would do to, you know, adjust itself if the city, you know, like I said, went up or down, you know, in population or revenue. So you've just got to be ready to manage going forward. And, you know, tell us what you think you can do and what's within your capability and what it costs to do each of the proposals. And I think there are probably a lot of assumptions about people agreeing or disagreeing with some of the proposals. I don't think that was the case. I think we were asking a lot of questions, taking in a lot of information, and a lot of what was said was good stuff. And even the Fire Association that came up and gave the presentation with the GIS information, you know, with the travel response time. Me personally, that's what changed my thought a lot because, I mean, I called the city manager that day before the meeting because I was starting to kind of look at where our fire stations were located and what the coverage was on a four-minute travel. And I looked, I said, my goodness, it looks to me like we've got a gap from somewhere around Eastern Little League Valley Drive up through Shakesville Road. I said, I'm probably missing it a little bit, but clearly, none of our fire stations can get there in the time needed. And to me, that was a problem. I mean, I can't, I can't go to sleep at night thinking, we've got a gap in the city when clearly, you've got to be able to respond in a certain time period. So that bubble to the surface for me is a much bigger issue, right? Something that's really seriously got to be fixed. So I think you've got to study the whole, you know, the whole thing in the context of what do we got to do to fix some of our known problems? We can't sit here with a huge gap in the city. We can't sit here with a fire department that's blocked by the railroad tracks at Commonwealth. And if you were to move a station or shut down a station and you're counting on Station 2 to respond and it's blocked by the train, you've got a real problem. So you've got to look at that whole, that whole thing in detail and understand what should we do. I know the lifesaving crew was called the First Baptist about two weeks ago. Train was on the tracks. Took them over 10 minutes to get there. Lady was having a stroke. That's not good. You've got to, you know, you've got to be able to deal with those. If we need to put in a, what, like an emergency vehicle access bridge or something in locations where that doesn't become a problem, where we can get over, you know, known blockages like that when trains are there, that's what we need to do. But you've got to look at everything as an entirety, I think, and come back and give us, give us the proposals of what you think can be done and what it's going to cost to do it and the time period to do it.
I would just add, too, Chief, if you want to elaborate, I mean, there are a couple resources out there that you've identified.
Right. We had just in the past few days requested that the state come in and do a study, a fire services study. And they typically will come in and spend a few days here evaluating the program from top to bottom, and then will make very broad recommendations on operations, administration, training, communications, and service delivery, fire and EMS. And I think, you know, that will be a very good thing to have done here, and that will be at no cost to the city. That's provided by the Virginia Fire Services Board and the Department of Fire Programs, which are state agencies. And I think that will be a good time to really move forward once we get that study back. We don't have an exact date yet, but we're on their agenda, and we should know, hopefully in the next month or two, when they could project that they'll do that study. And I think that will give us a lot of good information that will allow us to move forward in our future planning. And also, we are going to request that the International Association of Firefighters come back with us and do a more comprehensive GIS study on our fire station locations like you're talking about. So there will be two studies done at no cost to the city, and hopefully, between those two studies, we'll be able to answer a lot of questions, find out, should we or should we not be in the EMS business? Should we use volunteers, not use volunteers? I think between those two studies, we'll be able to garner a lot of critical information that will help us make good, well-educated decisions.
Well, I think that sounds like a good plan going forward because I know, as Councilman Mumpower pointed out, as Councilman Wingard's pointed out, I think all of us, you sit here and you listen to this and it, you know, you hear information and it raises questions, you know? I mean, to me, those maps showing the gaps in service times, it just visually laid out what I kind of had in my mind already, thinking about the traffic patterns and locations in the city. But the flip side of that is, those maps were talking about the fire and the problem with the train along Commonwealth and Euclid. And, you know, with the, having the ambulance service over there, they could run into, as you pointed out, the same issues. So, you know, maybe we need to look at, just as you do at the station up next to Van Pelt, maybe station an ambulance down here, even if y'all don't take over the ambulance or whatever, just so that they wouldn't ever run into those kind of issues. You know, the location of the station, again, thinking about, maybe at some point, you do need to look at different things. So there's a lot of questions there. I think, to me, that sounds very reasonable to do those studies. Again, you know, it's one of those things, it's asking these questions has brought up issues. The solution is not something we're going to, I don't think, arrive at in the next week before the first reading of the budget, you know? But if we can have this information as we go through the year, start looking at that and begin to plan for next year's budget or even further years out, depending on what the studies recommend in terms of capital outlay and stuff like that, I think that sounds like a good plan. You know, before I ask if there's any other comments, one thing I will mention is, when Councilman Mumpower was talking about the contingencies and stuff, I think, you know, that's not necessarily a bad idea either to always be prepared for what you might have to do. I know typically, and again, I think part of this is where with the CFO, that typically the CFO has come quarterly and gave an update to council in the past, and so.
That is correct, and I will also remind you at the January Finance Committee meeting that we did a mid-year look, and we did adjust expenses based on the revenues at the time. And the plan was to have done that again at the end of the third quarter, and with that absence, we were unable to do that.
And, you know, I'd say, well, you know, a lot of what we've done, and I'll save more of these comments for later because, but I will say this tonight, is, you know, look at the expense side, and we found some good cuts. I mean, that Saturday, we sat here and went through the departments. We found a lot of things, you know, to have even the school system come and offer things back. That's very amazing in and of itself, I think. But one side, we need to look at the revenue side as well, and I'm concerned about, you know, as you mentioned, some of the problem right now is declining revenues, and some of these cuts, I think, will have an impact on that. So we need to look at what we can do overall to try to increase revenue because there's only, as you pointed out, there's only so far you can cut. We need to increase revenues, whether it be from particularly the areas that are declining, the meals and lodging tax, other things, hopefully, before we refinance, get revenue coming in to the development there at Exit 5. Because again, you can look, the things you're saying about building up a reserve, a structurally balanced budget, those are the exact things that if you find the report, the last time Moody's evaluated the city, they would point out those things. We're doing some of that. It's going to take a while. One of the things that they're going to look for is revenues coming in from that project that, to be able to satisfy the debt. There's some other long-term things they point out in Bristol's, you know, that kind of hurt us about population and rates of poverty and things like that. Those are big, long-term issues that you're not going to turn around quickly. But I think the things that you can turn around, like trying to build up the reserve, we've started that over the past few years and making good headway. We're ahead of where we thought we'd be. You know, we have a structurally balanced budget, last year and this year as well, so we're not playing games, we're not using one-time money to pay recurring expenses and those kind of things. And that's where you can get into, while we have a lot of debt and that will need to be refinanced and looked at and how we deal with that in a few years, you know, when you look at cities, other cities that have financial problems like Petersburg, their issues aren't surrounded by debt. They have other issues that deal with these kind of things about the way their finances are structured. So, you know, we're, you know, we need to be mindful of the future, but I don't think it's, that we're, we're not as bad as it could be. I'll just leave it at that. Does anybody else have any comment? Before I will adjourn, I'll remind, since we do have a rather large crowd in attendance, our next meeting is our regularly scheduled meeting, which will be June 13th, a week from tonight, and that will be the first reading of the budget ordinance during that meeting. So with that being said, I'll call the meeting adjourned.
And the next meeting's at the School Board office. Did you say that?
Oh, no, I did not. But just to remind everyone that, yes, that meeting will be at the School Board office because June 13th is the primary for both the Republican and the Democratic governor or all statewide offices, and this is a polling place. So because of that, we will meet at the School Board office across Scott Street there on Lee Street. Thank you. Adjourn.